Chairwoman Williams.
Here. Next, I believe we have a motion. Do you want to make a motion, please?
Yes, a resolution adopting a significant amendment to the Housing Department's 2018-2019 Annual Agency Plan to include the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's Rental Assistance Demonstration Award and implement this program requirements.
Okay, I believe that's item four, but we can go back to three after we do four, so.
I'll second.
Would you do roll call, please?
DeCecio? Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza? Noakowski? Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Wiesenhain?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Item three is the minutes of December 5th. Do you have a motion for that, please?
I move.
This is the review and approval over the minutes of December 5th, 2018 Assisted Housing Governing Board Meeting Minutes. I move that they be approved or submitted.
Second.
Okay. Motion is second. We don't need to roll call, do we? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pounce. Motion carries unanimously. I believe that's all the items we have, therefore we are adjourned. Thank you very much for being here and participating. I am going to ask Police Chaplain Harry Sexton for today's invocation. Please rise if you can. I will formally call the meeting to order. Will you please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio?
Here.
Councilwoman Guevara?
Here.
Councilwoman Mendoza?
Here.
Councilwoman Noakowski?
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor?
Here.
Councilwoman Stark?
Here.
Vice Mayor Waring?
Here.
Mayor Williams?
Here. Our interpreter today is Mario Barajas. Would you like to introduce yourself, please?
Yes, thank you, Mary. Mary, Mayor. My name is Mario Barajas. I'm going to be serving as today's interpreter. I'm going to be making a brief announcement in Spanish. Habrá alguien, si, acaso hay alguien que necesite intérprete en español? Está disponible el servicio de interpretación? Solamente esté necesario, puede pasar hacia atrás al personal, pueden consultar con Sergio y él les puede facilitar los audífonos para escuchar la interpretación. Gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, citizens' comments. Each speaker has three minutes.
Good afternoon, Mayor Williams and members of the Phoenix City Council. My name is Hunter Franklin. I was adopted from the Arizona Foster Care System when I was 10 years old. My biological father had kidnapped me from my biological mother when I was four years old. I was locked in an apartment. I'd never been to school. I'd never gone to the doctor. I'd never been to the dentist. When I was put into foster care, I was developmentally delayed. My physical therapist remarked that I looked like a Holocaust survivor with no muscle mass and no core strength. My biological father was arrested in front of me by the Scottsdale Police and extradited to California on charges of grand theft felony and served six years in prison. When I turned 14, my biological father showed up on my high school campus to try and find me. I didn't know how he found out where I was. He then proceeded to stalk me and my adopted family, both in person and on social media. We went to court to file an injunction against harassment, but the order was not valid unless we were able to serve it in person. My family spent thousands of dollars and private investigators. The City of Phoenix Police said there was nothing they could do to protect us, even with my history of kidnapping. So my mother arranged a sting operation on her own through social media and hired a private investigator to serve the order. Since then, we've had to renew the order every year. I'm before you today because I am asking for a sponsor and an opportunity to present to the Public Safety Committee to help me change the Arizona revised statutes which states, "A copy of an injunction, whether or not registered, is presumed to be a valid existing order of the court for a period of one year from the date of service of the injunction on the defendant." I would like to request that the law be changed so the restraining orders against adults for minors remain in place until the age of 18, instead of having to be renewed each year. Now that I'm older, I want to help to try and protect adopted families from the psychological trauma I experienced by the stalking my biological father, a man whose parental rights were terminated by the state for the harm he caused me and a childhood that was robbed from me. Will you help me? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I believe you can come to the public safety, but I believe the law will have to be changed at the state legislature, but we'd be glad to hear it and do what we can to help you.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of the Council. At the risk of crying over spilled milk, I feel that I would be remiss if I didn't come before this body and again try to emphasize what I believe your fiscal and fiduciary responsibilities to the citizens of Phoenix. I'd appreciate your attention. With your vote to give carte blanche $150 million to the Phoenix Suns, the same Suns who have taken financial advantage of the taxpayer for the last 27 years, you've given them $100 for every man, woman, and child in the City of Phoenix. Only 8,000 people attend those games 41 days a year. There were some side deals made, I've come to find. At least two of you who voted to give this away did so in return for commitments from their private charities. You could have given every nonprofit in Phoenix $1 million. We'd been $125 million to the good. I submit that it is not your purview to give charity, our money to charity. The details of this $150 million will be spent on for much is woefully lacking. $4 million has already been spent on the sewer line that this council did not approve. I strongly suggest that each and every item now be approved by this body to ensure that the funds are indeed used for the betterment of the building and not the betterment of the Phoenix Suns. Under the terms of the contract, the City of Phoenix has total access to the building. Whenever the Suns are not using it, it is their right to go in and use it. The promotion of events has been dismal for the last 27 years. As a result, the City of Phoenix has received absolutely nothing in return. I suggest that you consider starting to manage this process and appoint someone, some department, probably that which is now running the convention center, to promote more activities there so that there will be earnings. Finally, I ask you to reflect on your decision to vote in favor of this giveaway, gross giveaway in my opinion, and used it for your core responsibilities, like 88 new garbage trucks, 100 new police officers, repaving 155 miles of our main streets, funding the extraction of the groundwater we've been storing. The next time you have something like this come up before this council, I hope you consider the fact that these are not your core responsibilities. Those are public safety, garbage, water.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I wanted to just take my three minutes to do two things. First, just tell you a story, and second, ask for your help in correcting an injustice that happened about 15 years ago. In 1964, the combination of the Arizona Highway Department, City of Phoenix, and other sponsors installed 100 concrete and brass historical markers throughout the state of Arizona. One of those markers was installed on the northwest corner of 28th Street and Van Buren, and that marker read, "Original site of Phoenix. In the winter of 1867-1868, a party led by Jack Swilling dug a canal from the Salt River to irrigate fields in this vicinity. Hellings Mill on the bank of the canal, plus a few neighboring stores, became the center of the Phoenix settlement. Three years later, a new townsite was surveyed and established to the west." That marker was there prominently displayed on that corner for a total of 39 years, and then in 2003, late one night, an errant driver demolished that marker. A city maintenance crew came out that night, picked up all the debris, took it back to wherever they put it, and it was never heard from again. And since that time, that corner has not had the marker. You can go there, you see no remnants of it at all. And what I would like to request is that this council and the mayor do whatever you can to correct that injustice. One of the first steps is, thank you, Mayor Williams, you just recently signed a proclamation making the month of March Phoenix Pioneer's Month, and I appreciate that very much. That provides us a springboard to do some education awareness around this. But the second step, as I see it, is being able to reinstall that marker in that same place at 28th Street and Van Buren. That's it. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I was unaware of the marker, so we can look.
Right. Thank you.
That's all the cards we have. Do you want to read the 24-hour paragraph, please?
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G-6554 through 6557, S-45345 through 45375, and resolutions 21712 through 21714 and 21716 through 21718.
Thank you. Our next item is the minutes of November 7th. I have reviewed them and moved them for approval.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pounce. Motion carries unanimously.
Item two, motion to approve mayor and city council boards and commissions nomination per the February 6, 2019 revised memo. Second.
Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pounce. Motion carries unanimously. We have one here. Raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Jennifer Tunning.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of...
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the Office of the South Mountain Village Planning Committee.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, I so do affirm.
Thank you. Congratulations. Would you like to walk up? All right, Councilwoman Pastor, acting as a vice mayor.
Motion to approve items three through 15. Second.
Comments? Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Items, ordinance, resolutions, and...
Motion to approve items 15, oh no, 16 through 91, except the following. Items 16, 22, 24, 47, 55, 57, and 91. Item 80 is as corrected and excluding, we're not excluding anything, so we're perfect. Do I need a...
Oh my goodness, I need a second.
Oh, second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Councilman DeCecio, can we take items 16, 22, 24, and 47 together?
I'd be happy to.
Okay. May I have that motion?
Move items 16, 22, 24, and 47. Second.
Did you want to make a comment?
No, thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
DeCecio?
No.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes. Leave that 62.
I think we left one off, and it was item 57.
Oh, we did.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
Second. Okay, second. Okay, so we'll just...
Motion, Councilman DeCecio, on item 57. Did you want to make a comment?
That's correct.
Okay. Roll call.
No, thanks. No.
DeCecio?
No.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Waring?
Excuse me, no.
Williams?
Yes. 62. Brings us to item 55. We do have some cards on that. Sean Severn. Everyone will have two minutes to speak. Oh, I see him coming. And following Sean will be Reverend Reginald Walton.
Mayor and council, hello again. First, I just want to point out how long this process has taken to even get to this point. We're the fifth largest city. We need to start getting our act together, whether it's this or our levels of pollution. I mean, it's time to start acting like adults. So I think most people would believe that this is an important issue. We need to have body cams, but they need to be issued to every police officer that has contact with the public, including the specialty teams, including SWAT. And it needs to have teeth, so if an officer chooses to turn off the camera, that there's real punishment. There doesn't need to be any redactment. I'm concerned, the way that this city functions sometimes, about things like delayed release to the public. I'm concerned about redactment and editing. So I would like, as you discuss this, those issues to be addressed and for you to take this seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Irvin Walton, Redeem Robinson will follow.
Good afternoon. I stand in support of this very ambitious plan. One of the recommendations that came from the Community Police Trust Initiative a few years back was that the City of Phoenix would roll out body cameras to every law enforcement officer in the City of Phoenix. And so I support this plan, but I also want to make sure that the policy goes hand in hand with it, that when or if an officer was to take matters into their own hands and decide to try to turn off the body camera, that there are stringent and strict punishments that come with that. One of the things that, one of the goals of the Community Police Trust Initiative is to build trust in the community. And so today, you have the opportunity to build the bridge of trust between law enforcement and the community by passing this. We also applaud the process in rolling this out. I was glad to be a part of the process, but please take this opportunity to vote yes. Please. I still have 45 seconds. I just want to make this perfectly clear. By voting yes, you're telling people that we take your safety seriously, and I would hope that you take a look at yourselves as you vote. This is historic. This is, like my predecessor said, this is one of the largest cities in America, and you have the chance to help to make it better for law enforcement and for the community at large. So again, thank you very kindly, and you know if I'm here in a collar, I mean business. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Redeem Robinson, followed Jerry Health... Health God? I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. Redeem Robinson, I am a resident of this great city. We have the opportunity right now to be in the fifth largest city in the country, and also, I believe this is the best city in the country. I mean, I'm still here, living here after three years and have no plan on leaving, going back to the East Coast, but however, this is a great city, and I believe that we need to make this city... I want to feel safe here. And when I say I want to feel safe, I want to feel safe from police officers who have been acting in violence towards the community. We have had officers who have shot, we have had officers who have committed acts of violence, we have had officers who have committed acts of sexual assault on people, and that needs to be viewed. And that needs, and we also, I hope that you will listen to us when we tell you that all these officers who wear the body cams, let's take action towards officers who turn off these body cams. There needs to be action towards them, they need to be terminated. We also need to make sure that SWAT officers have body cams at all times and are on at all times. So I will hope that you will consider, City Council and Mayor, I hope you all will consider voting yes on this. This is very critical. This is how we are going to build trust between the community and police.
Thank you. Jeremy, I am sorry, I messed up your name so badly. And I know you so well. And then after that, Chief, do you want to explain that you do have a written policy? So it's clear. Well, let Jeremy speak first and then...
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. Yeah, Health God is not a name that's easy to tackle. I stumble on it. And thank you, Chief. Members of the Council, I think most of you know that I have been very proud to serve on the Human Relations Commission for the city for the past six years, and I did have the opportunity to serve on the Community Police Trust Initiative Task Force, and I'm here today to urge you very strongly to please support this program going forward. As has already been stated, as the fifth largest city in the country, we have an obligation to lead, and part of that leadership is to employ the best practices that are available, especially in the area of public safety, where there are lives on the line, both of the lives of our officers and the lives of our community members every day. The body camera program is a huge deposit in the city's trust bank, if you will, which was a metaphor that was presented to us on CPTI as a means of trying to put a number or a measure on trust between community and the police department. This is an opportunity to create accountability, which is a significant factor in that trust, so that people do feel safe, so that people do feel like there is some measure of oversight taking place, and so that people know that what's being documented is going to be there and available. I do want to applaud Chief Williams for going with technology that will make it much more difficult for officers to, quote, "accidentally" turn off their cameras or not record incidents as they're taking place, but I do want to echo what's been said about having that strong policy in place to back it. And if I can take a moment, I also want to acknowledge Assistant Chief Kurttenbach, not only for piloting this program through really its entire lifespan, but for taking the time to brief citizens, to brief the commission, and keep us up to date so that we know that this is the right next step for this department and for this city. I urge you all to please cast your yea vote today, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, Mayor, Members of council, thank you for the opportunity to share that not only do we have a policy in place, we're looking forward to, once your vote is cast, in order for us to be able to touch the actual product that we're recommending in Axon, that's what we're looking at. We need that in order to make some adjustments to policy. Also know this, we have a very ambitious plan, as you heard, of us rolling these cameras out. We are going to roll them out with patrol, with our crisis intervention team squad, with our downtown operations unit, our motors, transit, as well as SAU or SWAT.
Thank you. We have a card. Michelle Rose, who just now wished to speak, but says she's in favor. Paris Wallace? You may. Come on up. And Paris Wallace will follow.
I apologize for misunderstanding that process. Thank you for letting me speak. My requests to the Phoenix City Council are quite simple. I would like for you to vote yes on number 55. The reason for that is to protect the good cops, as well as to build trust in the community. The steps that would need to be taken is to document the evidence, where every member of law enforcement is required to wear a vest body camera with audiovisual turned on that would record every moment of their interacting with suspects and witnesses. The reason I mention the vest camera is that way it cannot be removed without the officer removing their life vest. And as others have mentioned, to discipline those who refuse to comply with the policy to wear it at all times. It seems unreasonable to have to state, but to also turn it on. We should also have secure storage and management of the evidence. This means unaltered footage being automatically uploaded to a secure data warehouse, where an independent third body maintains the full control of the data warehouse, and to establish guidelines for releasing body camera footage, so that the family has the opportunity to view it before it's released to the public, and then to release it to the public on a free website within 48 hours of a critical incident occurring. There should be no requirement to create an account... or a password or a payment. And then I also recently learned about facial recognition software. It's being used in our city or proposed to. It's been shown across the country to be inaccurate, wildly inaccurate, even to the point of 98% inaccuracy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Paris Wallace, and then Luke Black.
Good afternoon, Paris Wallace. I'm a longtime District 4 resident. I am actually here to speak a little bit about Erica Reynolds and demand justice for her, a young black woman from South Phoenix.
I'm sorry, but we need to stick to the topic.
Oh, this is...
Okay.
Yeah. So she was racially profiled and harassed and actually sexually assaulted by Phoenix police officers. And she was subjugated to an illegal cavity search. It's been over a month, and the names of the officers have actually not been released. And they're probably still working or on paid vacation. Meanwhile, she's experienced severe emotional trauma and physical health issues as a result of this assault. And our community doesn't trust the Phoenix Police Department. And we've seen and felt the culture of violence from unnecessary arrests to the shooting of 44 people last year and the killing of 23. We do not and cannot trust this department. And as we've said for several years, body cameras are the bare minimum, the absolute bare minimum, in the steps that can be taken towards transparency. We know that body cameras won't reduce the use of force by Phoenix Police Department or keep them accountable with their actions to the community. But for those people who have been impacted by this police violence, body cameras are an important step towards getting closure and assuring there is more than just the cop side of the story. However, there must be a strong policy and disciplinary measures in place for this to truly be a step forward. Without strong body camera policy in place, this will just be a waste of over $5 million. And we'll let the Phoenix police get away with providing false sense of security and transparency. We expect all council members to demand a strict policy for community to see this as truly a step in the right direction. And we demand next steps to bring justice for Erica. That includes firing involved officers for racially profiling and sexually assaulting her. A strong body camera policy must include, I have seven things to say, real quick. Mandate for all officers to go to the field, must wear body cameras, including SWAT. Footage be released within 48 hours and released to the family before it's released to media. Cameras must be on at all times when interacting with community. And when it must be turned off, there needs to be a verbal statement on camera made. Must respect our policy and not allow this footage to be used in other databases or facial recognition. Officers involved in critical incidents cannot view footage before writing their report. Deny, please request, to pay police officers for turning their cameras on. Supervisors, sergeants, and lieutenants must also be held responsible...
I'm sorry, but you need to wrap up.
For the appropriate use of cameras, including consequences. Every instance, cameras are off during an interaction and if equipment is altered. And policy to be finalized with community partners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Luke Black and Maria Sanchez.
Because you asked Paris through those points, I brought a copy for you all to read.
Thank you.
So, yes to the body camera policy. As Paris mentioned, it is the bare minimum, and it is a step forward that is long overdue. However, that policy needs to be stronger. I would encourage members of the council to not be distracted by Chief Williams' rhetoric that this is a strong policy, because the policy that she is comparing it to is pathetic and weak and has served no purpose for this city. We need a stronger policy that has teeth, and we need it on every officer. I'm going to specifically point out one area that needs to be strengthened. We need to prohibit the use of facial recognition technology, which is interesting, given that the police brought their facial recognition technology to this meeting today. It's parked out front in the truck, if you all saw it. Citizens and residents of this community whose faces appear on body cameras do not need to be targeted. And this current policy, the way that it is written, allows officers to use that facial recognition to surveillance us and target members of this community. That is a violation of our constitutional rights and should not be included in this policy. You all, as council members, have an opportunity to take a really positive step forward. And I applaud you for finally getting to this point. But do not let this moment pass and put in a policy that will be weak and that we will spend the next many, many years fighting to change because it never had the teeth in the first place to actually make a difference and hold this police force accountable.
Thank you. Maria Sanchez, and then Berta Rita.
Hello, Mayor, Council. I just want to point out and say yes that we do agree with this. This is a step towards the right direction. We are years behind. A lot of major cities have already implemented body cameras. So I think it's very wrong to say that the police should be getting a... They're asking for 5% raise for officers to wear the body cameras. I disagree with that. We expect officers to use body cameras and reject the idea that we must pay officers more to be transparent in the quality of their work that they perform on a daily basis. Any deals that allow increased pay for basic quality of work reinforces that this department is not here to serve and protect our community. And we do need to have strong policies to make sure that... But not only strong policies, policies that the community can sit down with you and agree with and feel safe with to move forward, in order for this to be able to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Berta Rita, and then Lorenzo Valdez.
We need to add a double the time for translation.
Buenas tardes a todos. Este, mi nombre es Berta Rita. Soy este parte del distrito cinco y siete.
Good morning, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Berta Rita, and I am here as someone who owns property in District 5 and 7.
Y una de las razones por las que estoy aquí es porque no confío en la policía. Siento que la policía no es seguridad para nuestras familias.
And one of the reasons I am here is because I don't trust our police. I don't feel that police are safety for our families.
Ya que separan nuestras familias y matan nuestros hijos.
Because they are not only separating our families, but are also killing our children.
Invertir en ellos pienso que no es seguridad para nosotros.
And continuing to invest in police, I don't think is safety for us.
Pero yo sé que lo van a hacer, van a seguir invirtiendo en policías porque nunca toman en cuenta lo que como comunidad nosotros pensamos.
Right now, you're going to continue to do it. You're going to continue to invest in the department because you don't, because you never listen to what the community needs.
Ya que lo van a hacer, solo pido que haya reglas para las personas que les van a dar las cámaras y también consecuencias si ellos no las cumplen.
And so because that money is going to continue to move, what I'm asking here is for stricter...
Si ellos no las cumplen.
Yeah, for stricter policies and consequences when these officers don't use the cameras.
Las imágenes de la cámara de cuerpo deben estar disponibles para la familia antes de que estén disponibles para los medios.
And one of the demands on the policy is for the images, the body camera images, to be always available for the family before they're available to media.
Por ejemplo, el mes pasado, la policía de Tempe hizo hizo que las imágenes del video estuvieran primero disponibles ante los medios de comunicación.
For example, last month, Tempe Police made footage available to the media before they was ever available to the family. This was for Antonio Arce's case.
Antes de haber sido ofrecidas para las familias.
Before it was, so they let this, showed the media footage that the family was not even aware about.
Para que ellos las vieran. La familia fue acosada por una respuesta sin siquiera saber que había un video ya lanzado.
And thereafter, the family was then harassed by the media to respond to a video that they did not even know was out.
Espero que tomen en cuenta nuestras opiniones.
So I hope that you all take in account our thoughts and opinions.
Gracias.
Thank you very much. Lorenzo Valdez, and then Maribel Espinoza follows.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Lorenzo Valdez.
My name is Lorenzo Valdez.
Tal vez a la mejor ya me conozcan. Yo ya van tres veces con esta que estoy aquí ante ustedes presentes.
You might recognize me. This is the third time that I've been here in front of you.
La razón por la que estoy aquí hace, va a ser dos años, el 23 de marzo, los oficiales le arrebataron la vida a mi hijo en mi casa.
I am here because about two years ago, on March 23rd, the police officers took my son's life away in my house.
Y yo lo que vengo a pedirles aquí a ustedes aquí presentes y a los oficiales que se encuentren aquí.
And what I'm here to ask you, as someone represented that's here in front of us, but also to the officers that are listening.
Que sean más responsables en traer sus cámaras prendidas, porque yo ya va a ser dos años.
To be responsible and have consequences to have your cameras on.
Y pues yo hasta ahorita, como el día que pasó eso, el detective me dijo que ellos traerán muchas evidencias y todo en las cámaras.
Because two years ago, when this happened, and this was Phoenix Police, and Maribel, there were body cameras. So she's saying, she was told that there was going to be evidence shown to her about what happened.
Y pues hasta ahorita yo no he mirado ningún video, ni nada.
It's been over two, almost two years, and I've not seen a video, have not seen any evidence, have not seen anything.
Y que sean más responsables de que si les van a dar cámaras, que cuando uno lo llama para una cosa así de una emergencia, si ellos creen no poder responder a esa emergencia, ellos pueden buscarle a uno otra clase de ayuda y no arrebatarle la vida a nuestro hijo nomás así.
And that there are consequences because those officers that had cameras didn't have them on. And it's been almost two years, and I haven't received anything. And that if officers are showing up to our homes and are ill-equipped to help our families, to find other resources and to find another response, but not to continue to just take our children's life away.
Y aquí todos ustedes presentes, tanto si está la jefa aquí que los enseña que tienen que traer sus cámaras prendidas.
And for all of you that are here, including the chief, that you have to enforce and train these officers to have those cameras on.
Porque yo hasta ahorita le digo, estoy esperando yo ver esas evidencias que dicen tener ellos.
Because I'm still waiting to see any type of evidence of what happened to my son.
Y pues es todo lo que quiero decirles ya. Pues antes de todo eso que ellos miren todo eso o que los pasen a los medios, uno como padre yo pienso que tiene la responsabilidad de enseñarle primero uno las evidencias que dicen ellos tener y que cumplan con su palabra ellos.
And I am, so I'm demanding that, that this policies are strict and there are consequences for not having cameras on. But also, I will echo the demand that families are able to see the evidence, are able to see the video footage before it's released. I feel that us, as parents, have the right to be able to see that before it goes out to the, to media and communications, because I'm still waiting to hear back, to hear and see what happened.
Y otra cosa, no sé si esos oficiales que hicieron eso con mi hijo estén aquí presentes, pero aquí ante todos ustedes, yo quiero que ellos sepan que yo los perdono por lo que hicieron con mi hijo, pero que sean más responsables y que ya no vuelvan a hacer otra cosa así, porque es un dolor que le dejan a uno de madre.
And I don't know if the officers that killed my son are here today, but I just want to give them a message that I forgive you, but that I'm asking that you take responsibility so that you don't kill any other child and that you don't do this to any other parents, because this pain is, we don't wish it on anyone.
Es todo, gracias. Espero me escuchen.
That is all I have to say. I hope that you listen to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Maribel Espinoza, then Isabel Garcia.
Good afternoon. I'm so glad body cameras are finally being considered. It took a long time to get here, but I'm glad we're finally in this point. With body cameras, I think there should also be a set of rules to follow. One of my suggestions is, if an officer turns off a body camera during an encounter with a civilian, they must make a verbal notification of a reason why they're turning off their camera. If a police officer doesn't state a reason why they're turning off their camera, they're obviously committing a criminal act. And you guys need to understand that and stop ignoring it and hold them accountable for their actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Isabel, then Jennifer Hernandez.
Hello, my name is Isabel Garcia. I live at 929 West Gregory Road in South Phoenix in District 7. I'm here today in support of this policy, but only if specific demands from my community are included to ensure this new policing policy does no more harm to my community. I've been talking to my friends and family about all of the police violence that has been happening here in our city. And when the issue of body cams comes up, they are consistently surprised to find out that the majority of Phoenix cops already do not have body cams. So this is an issue that is long overdue. There is a perception in the public that Phoenix cops already have body cams, and that is not true. So I'm happy that this is finally happening, but this policy needs to be strengthened. In addition, they're surprised to find out that the few officers who do have body cams can turn them off. I had a friend of mine last night, I was talking about this, who said, dang, no wonder they're getting away with all of these shootings. So I am here today to demand that this policy include that all patrol officers, all detectives and SWAT officers, wear body cameras. That all agents of the Phoenix Police Department, who are in my community, who patrol the streets in South Phoenix every day, that they all have body cameras. And that they cannot turn them off, that these body cameras be turned on at all times. And as my friends, Paris and Lorenzo, have already mentioned, body camera footage is so important for us because it provides us access to the truth. It provides us access to what actually happened in a police interaction in the community. So another demand is that body camera footage be made available within 48 hours of a critical incident. This footage belongs to the community. We are paying millions of dollars for body cameras and the information that they provide.
Thank you.
If the department wants to deny this footage, they must get a court order.
Thank you.
So it is my expectation as a Phoenix resident, I've been here all my life, and it is the expectation of my friends here
Please wrap up.
that you take these demands and strengthen this policy.
Thank you. Next is Jennifer Hernandez, and then Christina Green.
My name is Jenny Hernandez, and I am a youth organizer. And Michael Nowakowski, you are my public servant. Body cameras do not stop police violence. We clearly saw that with Tempe Police earlier this month. A body camera did not keep the officer running, keeping the officer from shooting a 14-year-old, Antonio Arce, in the back while he was running away. To have what America portrays as heroes, kill your babies? I know you have nieces. I know you have nephews. I know you have kids. Imagine that pain. However, they can allow for a more true account of what happened. Through the body cam footage of Antonio Arce's murder, we were able to see some of the initial claims made by the officer to justify the shootings were not true. Because that's how it always goes. You blame us and you call us the criminals, but in reality, it's y'all. It's the police officers who are the criminals. It has provided family more closure to know what they were first told about their boy was not true. Vote yes to this policy, but not before there is clear discipline and accountability to these murders. And I want to ask you, Jerry Williams. I want to ask, what's your excuse for Erica Reynolds' case?
Stay on topic. We're talking about...
It is on topic, because there has not been said anything. It was a sexual abuse case that kept me up at night. We want the truth, and we want accountability.
Thank you. Christine Green, and then Alexia.
Hello, my name's Christina Green. I am a resident of Phoenix, and I live here, lived here for very long. And I am here to appeal to anyone on this Phoenix City Council who is on the fence with item number 55. I support it, even though, I'll be honest, I am quite skeptical of the... I support it, even though, I'll be honest, I am quite skeptical of this, you know, being the end-all, be-all of, you know, solving any of these, these, this upswing in Phoenix murders by the Phoenix PD. However, it at least, it helps with the families who are victims of any crimes. And also, I think you should support it because I just, that's, that's pretty much it. And there's been a lot of money that was spent on LBRADs and other things for the police. You could at least give us, give us this back, the citizens of this city, you could at least do this for us, is to just wear body cameras so you could increase some more trust amongst us as citizens of this city.
Thank you. Alexia Isats. Then, Verdania Hernandez.
My name is Alexia Isis. I've been a resident of Phoenix all my life and I'm in support of this item. Body cameras should be invested in at this point because there needs to be more trust within the community. There needs to be more trust and accountability. I think police officers get away with too much things. And the body cameras, as people have said before, are the bare minimum for at least holding some officers accountable of what, what they do. A few months ago, Phoenix City Council was able to pay for 4G Wi-Fi and LARDs, which is the anti-protest sound weapons that are, that can be used against protesters. This was all part of a budget that you guys passed. And what happened was now we're having a lot of issues with police brutality and you guys know this. Just last year, in 2018, 44 people were shot by Phoenix Police. That's a lot of people. I don't know if that is being grasped right now within your guys' minds, within Police Chief Jerry Williams' mind, but that's 44 people that have been shot. And I don't care what the reasoning behind is, but whatever reasoning that you guys may give the police for being able to shoot people so carelessly, I don't buy it. That's like, that's like giving an excuse for murder. There have been people that have died because of these things. There are people who, people have had to hold vigils for kids that died because of this. And there needs to be more accountability, especially in matters like this. I don't know if body cameras will do anything, but it's a step, it's a step in the right direction, as people have said. As long as officers have this point-and-shoot mentality, this, I'm not going to respect the citizen sort of mentality, then I don't think much will change. But you guys right now have the chance to make sure that officers don't commit these types of atrocities. You guys are in charge of the police.
Thank you.
And besides that, I think also, the footage, the facial recognition as well, that's also something that has been proved to be something that isn't needed because it's not reliable.
That's not on the agenda today anyway, so.
It's, it's.
Thank you. But your time's up now. Thank you. Mr. Hernandez, and then Lauren Potter, I believe it is.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Vidi Hernandez with Bullet in Action. We are here in support of the cameras. We do believe it's a long overdue measure, right, from like many other cities and that it could be a step towards transparency if we have strong policy. Erica's not here today, right, but because she's still having physical and mental repercussions from the sexual assault that the Phoenix Police Department did to her on December 26th, 2018. Till this day, we still don't have the names of the officers. We still don't have, we don't know what's happening to them. We demand that all of them are fired, right? Officers are continuing to roam free after sexually assaulting a young black woman without any cause, without any reason. Furthermore, you know, on that end, you can't paint the city and wear purple once a month and say you stand for domestic violence and against sexual assault and allow your officers to continue to do that in the department.
Please do not interrupt.
They're not interrupting. It's fine. It's fine. I'm okay with it. They're not interrupting. So that is a big demand, right? Like, we can't be hypocrites as a city and paint ourselves purple and allow these officers to continue to be on our streets sexually assaulting us. Finally, I want to ask to finalize this policy with community. And I know that Councilmember Nowakowski, as the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, is this policy going to go back there? How is this going to move forward? Are community members going to be part of finalizing this policy? Because we will not trust any of the measures without having community input. So I would love, and your discussion, if you could answer that. And then finally, I want to just call attention to the excessive use of force to us being here today. We have a right to come to these meetings. We have a right to speak at these meetings. When I asked outside, who ordered so much police, they said, well, it was council. And then they said, well, it was Jerry Williams, some of the officers out here. So I don't know who ordered this excessive use of force, but this is ridiculous. You all have riot gear in the back, we saw them coming in. You have riot gear on the bottom. You have, if you all wanted to know what we were going to do, you could have texted us. I actually informed the Police Department, like, oh, we're going to be there today. Is there anything you need from us? We could have been asked what we were expected, but to use all of these officers here today, like, that's, I don't know, 20 speed bumps that our communities could need right now, the wasted resources here. So I would also like to know how much money went to the, to how much police presence there is here.
Thank you. Lauren Potter, I believe the last name is, and then Charles Humantel. No, doesn't want to speak. And the last one says Ramon. Okay, that's all the cards we have. Do I have a motion?
I have a comment. I just like to make a comment.
Pardon me? Are you Ramon? I thought that's what I said. I didn't say that.
That's okay.
Yeah, I thought you had said something.
I thought that's what I was saying. I apologize.
Ramon, yeah. So I came to speak on item 55, and I want to say yes on that, on the cameras, because like what people have said before, and they only gave me two minutes. I think they gave other people more minutes on the, on the time clock, so. So like a lot of people said is that this is one step, but we're still going to need more help from the council in the future and for y'all to, to pass the City's Review Board, which is going to be the long-term that we're going to be pushing for and that we're going to be organizing for. Okay, one of the things is we want a strong body camera policy for the, for the, for the body cams. We want a mandate for all police officers that go to the field, including SWAT, must wear cameras. The footage must be released within 48 hours and released to the family before it is released to the media. Provide police reports and documents within five to seven days from date request. So what we're saying here is that a lot of times, you know, there is body camera, but the footage is not released. It's, it takes over a month for it to be released. And that right there is a disrespect to the family and to the community for that, for that footage not to be released. We want that footage to be released within two days and we want, we want documentation when five to seven days are requested. Cameras must be on at all times when interacting with police, police. And then when it's turned off, they must have a verbal statement on camera. Police must respect our privacy and not allow this footage to be used with other database and facial recognition. That officers involved in critical incidents cannot view footage before writing a report. Supervisors, sergeants, and lieutenants must, must always also be held responsible for appropriate use of cameras. There must be consequences every instance cameras are turned off. Police must be finalized with community partners. Also to deny police requests for pay raised to wear cameras. Yeah, because we don't want 5% to, to pay 5% for officers to do their job is not, is not, is not, is not.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You know, we want them to keep, to use the cameras because as is mandated by the state or the city. And we want them to be able to keep it on without having no other further pay. Finally.
I need you to wrap up, sir.
Yeah, finally, we want justice. We want the, we want all the police that are, for Erica Reynolds' case to be fired and to be fully investigated. Thanks.
Councilwoman, and then Councilman.
I just want to say that I'm glad to hear that the SWAT officers will now be equipped with body worn cameras. These are officers most likely involved in a critical incident, and I think it would have been a mistake to exclude them from the program. So Chief, I wanted to say thank you. I appreciate your willingness to work with our office. This is, was obviously a big priority for me and I'm happy that, to see that these group of officers are now included in the plan. I do have a question with this item. When in subcommittee, there was some discussion about improvements in redaction technology. Can you speak a little bit about what those improvements are?
So Mayor, Members of Council, Executive Officer, Mike Kurtenbach has been the person who's been working on that. So Chief Kurtenbach, would you answer that, please?
Mayor Williams, Councilwoman Guevara, I want to be clear that as we've watched the evolution of this technology over time, we went from locally hosting all of the video and having to use some very rudimentary means, redact that video, which shoots at a frame rate of 30 frames per second to provide context, to where we're at today with the redaction tool, if approved, will allow us to more expediently blur out, whether it be video or to redact audio that is imprudent for release, so that we can prepare case files more quickly, so those cases can move along, and so we can properly process public records requests.
Great, thank you. And then regarding facial recognition, would that then mean that the Axon, the body camera vendor, is already utilizing some type of facial recognition technology with regard to the video that is captured on, by these cameras? Do you have information on that?
So Mayor, Members of Council, Councilwoman Guevara, so we don't currently have facial recognition in our technology at the Phoenix Police Department. Right now, we're waiting for the vote from council in order to get our hands on the body worn camera system in Axon. And until we have the chance to get the product, look at it and figure it out, our next steps will be just that, working through the policy, working through rollout, working through all the technology. And I do want to say, well, I have a couple seconds, that we have auto activation as one of the main features in the system. So we don't have to worry about officers turning cameras off or on anymore because of our activation feature. So I don't know if you had any more on that, Chief Kurtenbach?
Yes, Councilwoman, just to expound upon that, as Chief says, we do not have facial recognition technology at all anywhere in the Phoenix Police Department. Where I think maybe there is a misunderstanding as it relates to redaction is the way the software works. So the way the software would work is if my image is captured on the camera, my face, the equipment would allow the redaction tool to identify my face and then redact my face wherever I move within the technology within that video. Some people mistakenly refer to that as, as being that type of capability, but it's not. It's merely as a redaction tool. And we don't use any of the video that we have and adjust that in any other software, facial recognition or otherwise, to do other identifications.
All right, thank you. Councilman Nowakowski.
Yeah, Mayor, so we, we actually listened to this in the Subcommittee, in the Public Safety Subcommittee. Thank you, Chief, for being there and also our Assistant Chief. And many of those questions were answered. One of them you just answered right now is that it's a tool that we're going to be using, the facial recognition, is that basically it took hours and hours of staff time to actually go through all the video, and that's one of the concerns that we had is the turnaround. And basically, using this new technology, if we end up with these cameras, it'll allow us to, to wrapping up the system a little bit faster. So what it does, it recognizes the individual's face and it blares out all the other people's faces in the video that shouldn't be on that video for anything else. The other thing too is the technology where it actually turns on automatically, right? Can you talk a little bit about that?
So Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Nowakowski, there were 42 mandatory requirements that we had in this new RFP. Just to refresh everyone's memory, when I was onboarding with Phoenix PD, we were in the middle or at the back end of our RFP, a request for proposal for body worn cameras. I was aware of some new technology coming out because I just rolled out body worn cameras in my previous agency. And at the request of Mayor and Council and others, just began the process of a new RFP. So we had 42 mandates. There were three key issues for me. One was auto activation because the mere fact that our folks sometimes were turning cameras off and on, so that was problematic to me. Recording in high definition is also important and low light sensitivity, thank you. Low light sensitivity was very important too, so we could really capture those images. So we have those features in there and with your approval today, we'll be able to, again, roll out in a very aggressive manner, body worn cameras to our patrol officers, our crisis intervention team squad, our downtown operation, our motors transit, as well as our special assignment unit or SWAT, as you referred to.
Chief, also that was discussed today is if you don't turn on your camera, if you turn it off when you're supposed to have it on, we do have in the policy, what would happen to those officers, right?
So Mayor, Members of Council, Councilmember Nowakowski, yes. Our officers who don't turn on the body worn cameras right now, again, they have to turn it off and on. They at minimum get a written reprimand. We've placed that in policy, as well as rolled it out legally, as well as had training videos. And if I may take a second as far as training goes, because I know that there was a question about training our officers and using the body worn cameras. With your approval with this product, we are going to put them on our new officers in the academy so that they learn muscle memory, that they learn how these cameras work in the system. So we're going to put that with your approval, put that on our new recruits in the academy. But the discipline is there. It's in policy. At minimum, it's a written reprimand.
And I heard a 5% pay increase if you're wearing the cameras? I've never heard of that. Is that true, false, or I'm not sure where that came from?
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, in fact, a proposal presented to the city by the Phoenix Law Enforcement Association, negotiating on behalf of the officers, did, that was one of the proposals submitted in negotiation, but it has not been negotiated and it would have to be accepted by management and accepted by council. And we're in the middle of negotiation. So I think that's referring to a proposal from the union rather than anything from us.
Basically, the union is asking for that, plus a whole list of other things too, right?
Correct. It's one of many proposals. We get proposals from unions in the bargaining process, but it has not proceeded at this point.
And if we vote on this today, that doesn't mean that it's automatically going to happen where, where officers wearing a body cam would get 5%?
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, that is correct. That is a separate decision of the City Council as it would relate to a negotiated contract with the police union. That is not part of today at all. You're correct.
You know, Chief, I just really want to thank you because I know that once you became Police Chief, one of the things that we asked you was to look at a policy, a policy that would work to protect our residents and also to protect our police officers, something that's fair for everyone, a win-win for, for the officers and for our community. And we've worked very hard. And you brought this to our Subcommittee several times and it was an open discussion. And I believe there's going to be future open discussions at our, at our Subcommittee on this issue. I'd be more than glad to invite anyone if they want. This agenda is set for this coming Wednesday. But in the future, if y'all want to put something on there, we can revisit this. If there's any other great ideas for the policy that we need to change, and we heard some, some ideas here. I'm pretty, I'm pretty open. I believe my colleagues are, and I believe the chief is, as long as it's fair and just for all. Just once again, thank you all for your hard work. And it's really about making sure that we have the right technology and something that works for the city of Phoenix. We tried a pilot program. The pilot program was great, but it was, it took a lot of time to turn that video over to individuals. One thing that I did here is releasing the video to the media. I believe that it's true, we should let the, the individuals and the family members or even the people that are involved actually get a chance to see the videos before release. So that's something I believe we can work on. And it's, this is just a document that's, it's ongoing. It's a living document that we can change. And if there's any great ideas, bring them down and we'll make it happen, right? So thank you all for coming out and, and helping us make this policy the best way it can be, right? And this is something that we've been advocating, wow, for the last, since 2010 or so. And we started with the pilot program in my district in Maryville and History Mountain. And it's been something ongoing, so thank you all.
Councilwoman Mendoza.
Thank you, Mayor. With some of the comments that Councilman Nowakowski said about the family, I don't know if there's a possibility to add that into the policy where before any footage gets released to the media, it gets released to the family members. So I'm not sure if that's something that we can add to the policy or...
So Mayor, Members of Council, Councilwoman Mendoza, as we look down the list, there are a lot of things that we are amenable to. I absolutely agree that we need to release information to the family prior to it being released to the media. I think that's... I think that's only human. That's that's what we should do. We will look through the policy and see if it should be in policy, if it should be in a procedure. But but I'm saying today that that makes absolute total sense for us to do that in order for us to build trust with the community.
Thank you. I would like to see it in policy.
Okay.
Also, some of the speakers spoke about the delay in getting some of the video out. So can you talk about the positions that we are hiring so we can expedite some of this footage for investigations or public requests?
Mayor Williams, Councilwoman Mendoza, what we are asking for today is 21 new positions. As it stands right now, if you understand the flow, an officer captures a body worn camera video, and oftentimes, especially if this is approved, there will be many videos that are captured on one incident. If we assume that was a domestic violence, let's say, that would require criminal prosecution at the city court, then the body worn camera unit would have to provide that video to the city prosecutor's office to then prepare the video for trial, for the public defender, et cetera. So what we are asking for is 21 total positions, which would bring us to 30 total filled positions. Right now, there are six filled positions in the police department, three in the city prosecutor's office. City prosecutor also has one temporary position. Ultimately, what that would mean is 17 filled positions in the police department, 13 in the city prosecutor's office at full deployment, at 2,000 cameras. As Chief Williams noted, there are certain features of this redaction tool that we don't know yet because we haven't had the opportunity to fully utilize it on a grander scale. So we will only add those positions as they are needed.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I have a question.
Councilwoman? You can do both.
Okay. I have questions because there's eight points here. And one of the questions I have is officers wearing body worn cameras, and I know eventually we want all officers to wear body worn cameras. This is the first phase of a rollout. Do they have a choice to wear it or not?
That's a good question. Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Pastor, no, they won't have a choice to wear them. So this is going to be one more tool that we add to what the officers wear, and so it will be a required item.
Okay. Is it possible to, and I know we just spoke about it, but I just want it on the record, is it possible with the new technology, because it's it's the technology that we're looking at today is very different from it was four years ago and even last year or six months ago? So is it possible to release footage in 48 hours?
Mayor, members of council, again, I want to go back to the fact that we have not had the chance to deal touch the system.
Okay.
I would like a little bit of time pending your approval to work through that to see. I would say in some instances, perhaps.
Okay. So could we, once once everything is purchased and every up and going, could we, within six months, revisit the 48 hours?
So Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Pastor, absolutely.
This is an assumption, but of course, you know, for agreements, you don't assume, so I'm going to ask this question, that the cameras are on at all times, at all times, so I'm even interacting with community. Is that possible? And when they turn off, at what point do they turn off the camera?
So I'd like to have Chief Kurtenbach answer that since he pretty much wrote the policy.
So Mayor Williams, Councilwoman Pastor, to be clear, the camera would not be on at all times. And let me explain. So an officer has the opportunity to take a lunch break.
Correct.
Wouldn't be appropriate to capture that video, to go to the restroom, to make a call to a significant other, to have a conversation with his or her partner. It would not be appropriate at that time. But policy already is very prescriptive on when the cameras must be activated, and specifically during any investigative or enforcement contact, to include but not limited to, and the operations order lists those.
Okay.
With the auto activation technology, that will eliminate that human error to a greater extent because the cameras will automatically turn on. But just to be clear, they are not on at all times for the reasons that I just stated.
Okay. And then item four, it is talking about facial recognition and it to be used with other databases. My understanding is that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I could be, is that we have other databases that come together or other software that comes together that does facial recognition. Right. But my understanding is, and I this is where clarity needs to be be spoken, is that, do we do that?
So Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Pastor, we've been talking, Mike and I have been talking through this. We don't have facial recognition technology in the Phoenix Police Department at this moment. So we don't we don't have that.
Okay. So when I was listening to testimonies right now, someone spoke about racial, I mean racial, facial recognition, specifically the van outside. And I'm not really sure. I wasn't paying attention when I was walking in to look at the van outside that has the technology for facial recognition. True, not true?
So we don't have facial recognition in Phoenix Police Department?
Okay.
And we contacted our Homeland Defense folks just to make sure and to verify that. So I know it's a big department, but we don't have it.
Okay. That's just what I want to know. Number five is officers involved in critical incidents cannot view footage before writing their report. Do they do that?
So Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Pastor, they do not do that now, and it's in our policy.
Okay. I believe item six about police please request, that's one of the the pieces of items that we have received during negotiations where they would, I'm not even really sure what the request is, where they would get a 5% raise for wearing cameras. I'm not really sure what the request is, so I will then, that's part of probably an item in the negotiation. This says, and I'm not sure about this one, supervisors, sergeants, and lieutenants must also be held responsible for the appropriate use of camera, including consequences every instance cameras are off during. I'm assuming this this applies to all officers regardless of the rank.
Absolutely.
Okay. And I believe Councilwoman Noakowski, my colleague, who I have I trust in this process as the chair of the police subcommittee, Public Safety Subcommittee, would work with the communities to really finalize the policy that is in the win-win situation between public safety and the community.
So Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Pastor, absolutely. And we've already begun the process. Chief Kurtenbach and Aubrey Gonzalez from my office has been working very closely with Poder, meeting, speaking with and talking with them through the issue of body worn camera policy. So absolutely.
The chief and executive assistant chief?
Chief and chief.
I don't know what to say. I just really appreciate all the time and work that has gone into this, in particular the CPTI, because we asked members of the community to participate in the CPTI, to come up with recommendations. And I am glad to see that we are checking or making this recommendation to happen. However, there are still several other recommendations that need to happen from the CPTI. And as an advocate of asking community to come together and form a body of recommendations, it is my hope that we continue to finish off what's left. I've been told several times that, you know, the CPTI committee has been, you know, was closed, or we did the recommendations, and and now we're moving through these recommendations. I believe two are still left, and we probably need to revisit those in a way and how we go about making it happen. And so just want to thank you because I do really strongly believe in in heart of hearts that public safety want to do the right thing and the best thing for our community because at the end of the day, they are part of our community and they live within our community. And so I believe we can really, and I have faith, that we will get to that space and time where trust has been rebuilt. So really would like to thank everybody in this effort. It takes a community, and you're seeing something happen today. So thank you. And I will make the motion.
To approve?
To approve item 55.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're seeing no one else. Roll call.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Guevara?
I'd like to explain my vote. That's okay. Moving forward with this plan to equip 2,000 officers with body worn cameras is an important step for our police department and for our city. The city council report on this item says that these cameras will allow the police department to demonstrate their commitment to transparency, ensure the accountability for its members, and increase the public's trust in police officers. I think that would be a great outcome, and I'm ready to work with the police department to make sure that that happens. But this plan alone won't do it. Achieving this outcome is just as dependent on the policy that governs the use of these cameras and the videos that created them. I know that Chief Kurtenbach has drafted our current policy and has been at the forefront of this issue for years, and I trust that he'll work with the community to ensure that their concerns are addressed within the policy as it's revised. I know that this council and the police department have been talking about body cameras for years, and I'm glad that we're finally moving forward with the plan. And with that, I vote yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes. Senator One, approval. Thank you. Thank you all for participating. We are now to 91. I'm going to open the public hearing. Staff, do you want to come up and?
Mayor, members of council, item 91 is a general plan amendment for an area generated by 99th Avenue to 87th Avenue and Broadway Road to Sunland Avenue. We don't need to have a PowerPoint presentation. I think we can handle this one fairly quickly unless the council would like a PowerPoint presentation.
Does the council want a PowerPoint on this? I see everyone shaking their head no.
Mayor, members of council, this is a 318 acre site that is currently farmland. The general plan designation is residential 1 to 2 dwelling units per acre. The proposed general plan designation is commercial mixed use and mixed use, commercial residential 10 to 15 dwelling units per acre and residential 10 to 15 dwellings per acre. The Estrella Village Planning Committee voted 6 to 0 to approve this per the staff recommendation. The planning commission also voted 7 to 0 to approve it per the Estrella Village Planning Committee recommendation. It realigns the the general plan land use designation for an area where the I-10 reliever freeway is going to go through the southern part of the Estrella Village. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
We have one that says, really give it back to you? Sorry. If if needed, did you want to speak?
The mayor's only necessary.
Okay. No one else is here, so I will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move. Item 91. Second.
Per the planning commission's approval?
And adopt the related resolution.
And adopt a related resolution.
May we have a motion? And okay, roll call.
DeCecio?
Yeah.
Guevara?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes. Thank you. I believe that completes our agenda, but we do have two people for citizens comment. Oscar Hernandez? That was, did you want to speak again?
I never speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have one question. I don't know, you guys can help me. I had one very difficult situation with my water bill that made me feel discriminated and incommodous with this situation. When I start my my water bill, they charge me $460 because they say then somebody owes a spend water. So I start to with my debit of $460. They put me, they said, they told me, oh, no problem, we can give you one payment plan. So I I start to do the payment plan for $250. On the last month, and I have a water, I don't have the $250, and I only went to pay $100. I come to ask if they can give me a break, and I will bring the other $150. And they say no. The same day, they send somebody of the water department to turn off my my water. The guy confused my address, and he went to the next door and put the water to my neighbors. So obvious, my neighbors, this is a apartment complex, everybody come out and say, hey, why you put out my my water? We pay the the bill. So this this guy, when he know where I live, he went to my house and start to disconnect my water. So when I come back to the water department to ask to what can I do, they told me, you right now, you owe $400 more because you broke the meter, and we put a lock because you broke it. And I said, I don't broke nothing. And the lady say, oh, we have videos and we have the proofs that you broke it, and you have to pay for. And I say, no, I don't broke nothing. I know that this is not right. Show me the proof that you say. And she say, okay. And she give me one piece of paper and send me to the fifth floor on the city building. And I was right there and give the information. The lady take the paper and say, I don't know nothing about this paper. Why they send you here? We don't have nothing to do with this. So she called to the water department and the lady Alma Hernandez. She say, oh, we're going to give the proofs in three days. So the time start to run, and I don't have water. I was asking to her after a week, hey, what happened? And she never show me the proofs. I come six, seven, 10 times to the water department office to asking about my what is happening. So the time is coming. And finally, I owe right now $2,000, around $2,000 for water always, and I don't have water for the last three or four months. And only one time, the lady Alma Hernandez called me. But when when I answer the phone, she have the phone. I come very fast to the office, and I say, hey, she called me, but I want to talk to her. And she say, no, she's busy. She gonna call you back. She never called me back. She never contacted me in three or four months. And right now, I owe all this money. I went to you to the to her office on the ninth floor, and I asked her, and she say, okay, now you have to pay all the money. And I say, no, you say that you have the proof, and I I broke the meter. And she was not nice. She told me, you gotta go from here, or I gonna call the the police, the the security. Yeah.
We have a person on their way over here that can meet with you and hopefully get this resolved very quickly. So it's, so stay here till we get that person over here. She's coming over from her office.
Okay.
And she'll work through all the details with you and see if we can get this fixed.
Okay. I will do that.
Yeah.
Señor?
Go ahead.
Si puede tomar asiento, va a venir alguien para que le pueda ayudar ahorita, ¿okey? Gracias.
One more chance. Running deer? No running deer? We're adjourned.